At this time, I will call to order the March meeting of the Wilson Mills Town Council. Would that my task, Councilman Philip Wright, to lead us in the invocation?
Lord, we come this season together again to try to establish rules and regulations for this community, things that would be beneficial, that might benefit each and every one of us in here. As we strive to do this, Lord, you give us guidance and understanding of the things that we need to do. And we thank you for the blessings you've given us and ask you to continue to bless us in Jesus's name we have come in.
At this time, we will have the pledge of allegiance. Before we approve, before we approve the agenda, we need to add a couple of things to the agenda. On the very first thing here, we need to put a C, discussion with the attorney concerning the resignation of Mayor Huzzell. And under regular business G, town administrator report, Leanna Worley, we need to add approval of grant agreement. Does anybody have anything else that needs to be added to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion to accept the agenda as we now have written it?
So moved.
We got a motion by Councilman McGowan, second by Councilman Wright, all in favor? All ayes. Okay. At six thirty-three, we will open the first open forum. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this first open forum? I'm sorry, we have to do the discussion with the attorney of the resignation of the motion before the first open forum. I'll open, I'll ask the attorney to give us what he needs to tell us. This time, do we have a motion to accept the minutes for the town council meeting on February the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one?
Make a motion, we approve the regular town council meeting.
Second. I have a motion made by Councilman Jernigan, seconded by Councilman Wright, all in favor? As have it.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes for the closed session council meeting, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Motion was made to approve the closed session council meeting by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Wright, any discussion? All in favor? As have it. At this time, we will now have the discussion with our attorney about the resignation of the mayor and what we have to do with that situation.
Thank you. Just to, I think each of you already are aware and received a letter that the mayor has sent to the town administrator indicating his resignation from that position. I think if that's included in the minutes, it would be helpful for the record. In the state law dictates the process by which a member of a governing board is to be replaced in the event of a vacancy. The first step that I would recommend is that in order to make it official, it doesn't, it's not indicative of of agreement or disagreement with the resignation that was tendered, it doesn't, it doesn't, you don't have the authority to prevent the resignation of somebody who intends to resign. But the first step to sort of clear the path forward to appoint a replacement is to have a vote to accept the resignation that has been tendered. That establishes a firm date of the resignation so that you can move forward with filling that position. And if you'd like to do that now, I think that would be fine. And then after that, I can explain in greater detail the procedure for filling the vacancy.
I make a motion, we accept Mayor Huzzell's resignation as of March fifteenth, two thousand thirty, or twenty-one.
We have a motion made by Councilman Wright, seconded by Councilman, can't think of your name. Dobbin, I'm sorry, my brain was bad. Councilman Dobbin, that we accept the resignation of Mayor Jim Huzzell effective March the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The ayes have it.
All right, now that you have a vacancy in the position of mayor, state law does provide a, it does say that the means for filling that vacancy is that the town council is the board, is the entity that makes that replacement. It doesn't indicate a specific time period in which you have to do that. I've had this come up before, not in the position of the mayor, but in the position of a, in the position of a council member or board member who has resigned. And I usually, in those situations, encourage the board to have a deliberative and very purposeful process of filling the vacancy. And by that, I usually suggest that, and before I do that, I should say that the procedure for filling the vacancy of the mayor is the same as that of filling any other board member or council member. But what I suggest typically is that the town council solicit interest from those who would be interested in serving in the role of the mayor. And then at the next meeting, that you come forward with a list of folks that you would like to nominate for that position. There's actually two different ways in which, once you have your slate of nominees, there's two different ways that you can proceed to fill the position based on that list, that slate of nominees. The first is a simple motion and vote on a nominee. So if somebody could say, I vote, I vote to nominate, or after you've made all the nominations, you put the names out on the board, on the table, then somebody could simply say, I move to appoint person A to the role of mayor, and then there would be a second and a vote on that. If that person failed to get the requisite majority, then that would fail. And then somebody else could make a motion to fill the vacancy with another nominee.
Doesn't necessarily have to be a council?
Oh, no, no, absolutely not. It can be anyone. That's right. A citizen at large in the town who would otherwise be eligible to hold that.
I was under the impression that, I did just a cursory thing today, and it, I saw two conditions. One of them would be that the best thing to do, the best course would be to go with the second runner-up for the position of mayor in the last election, in which case we don't have anybody as a runner-up. It was one twenty-five to fifteen, and the fifteen were miscellaneous write-ins. So, and I thought the second one was, it has to come from, it should come from the town council, a member of the council.
That is not necessary.
Rather than just somebody in town that hasn't run for the position, isn't, you know, certified, not certified, but isn't, doesn't have the, let's call it the confidence or the vote of the citizens of the town.
Sure. No, and that's, it's, the two things that you mentioned are fairly common. Because typically, the board, whomever the board is, wants to somewhat defer to what they believe their citizens want. And usually, if you have, like you say, a second runner-up, that suggests that that person, the town citizens thought was somebody they would like in that role. And then, of course, somebody who's already on the board has clearly gotten the favor of the citizens. If it is somebody on the board, then, once you do that, you actually then have to fill that person's vacancy. So it's sort of a double, a double, two vacancies that end up needing to be filled in that manner. But you're not required to do either. You can nominate anybody who is eligible, who would have been eligible or is currently eligible to serve as mayor. Does not have to be a standing board member, does not have to be the second highest vote getter.
In most cases, of the ones that I've noticed and I've seen, for example, the vacancy that occurred on the Board of Education here in Johnston County, they solicited applications from people who might be interested in being on the Board of Education. Of course, I understand they were trying to solicit from the people, some of the people who ran and did not win. But to me, I don't see, to me, I think we should solicit applications from anyone who would like to be the mayor. That, and we need to give a specific time period to solicit that information. That doesn't mean that we have to take those people, one of the council members might nominate somebody else. But I do feel like, now, this is my opinion, I do feel like we need to solicit applications from anyone who might be interested in serving as the mayor for the remainder of the term. Now, we know the term will end, it's up for election this time. So the term will end December, the December meeting, because that's when the new members of the council will be installed. So we're not talking about a long time. You know, I don't know what everybody else thinks, that's just my opinion. But I do feel like we need to solicit applications from anybody who would like to be considered for the nomination, that's just the way I feel.
I would just add to that real quick, briefly, that that is a common way of handling it, is to get folks to submit applications. And that those can be, that could either be the exclusive group of persons who are considered, or you could have additional nominations, but that'll create a pool of candidates.
Do you have any other options, or what are some, because this, we've never been through this, we don't know, that's,
That's right.
We're just trying to figure out. We need to know all of our options that we have.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've covered more or less most of them, and that is that, you know, some boards decide to go with someone, just automatically go with the person who received the second number, highest number of votes. Some people choose to elect somebody from, who was on the board. But I think probably the most common practice is to solicit interest informally, really, just, you know, on the record. Ask for folks to submit applications or to inform them of their interest. And then it's really, again, it's up to the board, so you're not bound by the list of nominees, because ultimately, only one person is going to be nominated or receive the final approval of the majority of the board to take that position. So, again, it's either you folks nominating whom you deem best, and you include however many or as little people in that process as you like. And those are all the different ways of coming by that, those pool of nominees. So it's really up to you guys, and you know, it can be as broad or as narrow as you want. But I do think, I agree that it's good to have a pool of people, and it's good to know that these people are people who are interested in the position as opposed to nominating somebody who hadn't, you know, who's completely unaware of their nomination and might not want to be the mayor, so.
Michael, I got one more question. Is there, is there an option of not feeling it until it's voted on? And going with the mayor pro tempore being in charge of the meetings?
So, to answer that, it's somewhat unclear. The statute simply says that the board shall fill the vacancy. Again, it doesn't have a timeline. There's another statute dealing with, I think, it's counties, that says sixty days. But there's no such requirement in the statute that deals with local government and municipal government. So it's sort of an open question, well, how quickly do we have to act? And certainly, when you're dealing with, you know, if this resignation had come two months before the election, it might very well be the best course of action to simply wait and let that position be filled by the elected folks.
I'm not asking because I want to be there, I'm just asking as an information, it's the,
I think, in this case, though, you're far enough away from the election that you start to invite the possibility that somebody says, that, you know, somebody challenges that and says, no, the statute says that you shall fill it, and you can't just sit on your hands for, you know, six, seven years.
Well, I think we should, I think, I'm all for what I suggested a few minutes ago, which is solicit applications from people who are interested. I'd like to see us get, set a timeframe, if we're going to do that. You know, it's up to all the other members, they can express what they think needs to be done. But, you know, we need to set a short timeframe, and I mean, as short as we can. I don't, I think if you're going to solicit applications, you're also got to look at every one of the applications that come in, and then go from there, and then let the council members determine who they want to nominate from that list or from a list of their own. But I would hope that a council member, if they're going to nominate somebody, would have some kind of a statement from that person saying that why they would like to be the mayor for the rest of this term. I mean, if you're going to nominate somebody, in my opinion, you need to have somebody that's going to give us a reason that they would like to be the mayor.
That needs to be in the application process, I would think.
I, did you have something to say, Carolyn?
I was going to agree with him, it should be in the application. You know, why they want it to be the mayor, or whatever.
I'm going to go the other way. I'm going to go the other way, and I'm not, certainly not throwing my hat into any kind of a ring. But when we do things up here, we do these, we do things for the benefit of the townspeople, the people of Wilson's Mills, the voters. We are at a very, very crucial time, as we're all well aware. And it can be very contentious at times, which is also well aware of that. And I think to just to have, this is not a dog catcher position, where you want to, you want to be the mayor, throw your application in the hat and we'll pick somebody. I think it's way too important of a position to do that. It's a position of leadership. And what if you get, what if you get three people that throw their hat in the ring and we don't know these people? We don't know anything about them. Do we have the time to vet them, to decide that they're going to do something that's going to be for the good of the townspeople of Wilson's Mills? Again, it's not a dog catcher position. According to the law, of course, the job description of the mayor is very simple. It's to sign checks and documents, hold meetings, and kiss babies. That's it. But as we know, there is more to it than that. It is a leadership position. It's the person who stands up for Wilson's Mills. If it's somebody, I hate to use the term off the street, but it could very well be. Maybe we get people that we don't know, and we have to vote on one of them. My feeling is that, as the law allows, the people have expressed their opinions with their votes, and they have selected us as council members to represent them and to do things in their best interest. It's a learning curve for the mayor. And by the time the mayor, the new one, if we select one off the street, becomes acquainted with the job, it's time to select a new one. It's time for somebody to run for office. I just think personally that we need a member of the town council who the folks have already, the folks know, they understand, they may not very, may not like, but again, again, it's, we're going to vote for one of our own members. We're not, we're not doing this out of a sense of being selfish. We're doing it for the people of Wilson's Mills because they deserve something like that. They deserve better than throw your application in, we'll figure out something.
I feel that it should be a member of the council too, because most of us on here are familiar with what's been going on and what it takes to get the sewer extension on Swift Creek Road, these subdivisions. It's got a lot of stuff that someone, not been coming to the meetings, or not been at this table, or haven't any idea what's going on. And if, like Dave said, it takes some time to catch up, find out what's going on. Of course, we're not smart enough to even put it in our ear in a day or two.
But as soon, but as soon as you pick, if you pick a council member, just as soon as you pick a council member, now you got to go back and pick somebody that's not a council member to take that council member's position. And so you're right in the same position.
No, that's the easy process. That's the easy one, because we have people that are third, fourth, and fifth runner-up, and you pick the one who's after that. That's the easy part.
If you pick one off the street for the town council, you got four other members to guide them and to discuss with.
But we also have, you know, there's a lot of people out there that's run for a town council, your third, fourth, and fifth town council members, that very much might, might, and probably some will, apply for the mayor's job. So we're doing the same thing. I mean, I would hope that maybe a former council member would consider applying to be the mayor.
What if they don't?
Well, if they don't, they don't. But hey, hey, but here's the thing. You're saying we might get three, three people that we don't know anything about. Well, if we don't know anything about them, we don't have to take them. We don't have to, we don't have to vote them in. Just because we're asking for applications doesn't mean that we're going to pick one of those. We're going to pick the best, the best person we can get. And if you have somebody that you feel like should be the mayor, the only thing I request is that that person, if it's a town council member that wants to be the mayor, that person should at least fill out an application or something detailing why they're, they want to be the mayor rather than the town council member, just like we're going to ask the person out in the street, or whoever we're talking about. We're going to ask them to fill out and tell us why they want to be mayor and how they're going to help the town of Wilson Mills by being the mayor of Wilson Mills.
Sure, it'd be nice if we could look out in the audience and see those folks, but we never see anybody. And, and it's, they don't, as far as I know, watch the meetings at all. And I just want somebody who's, who's in tune with what's happening.
I would just make the comment, I don't know if I said it earlier or clarified that when, when accepting applications or statements of interest from folks, you're not creating an exclusive pool. You could still say nominate anybody who's eligible, even if you get, if you only get two applicants in the pool, and you're like, you know, I don't really care for either of those two, you could still add your own nominees, whomever, including people on the board, if you wanted to. It's, you're not restricted in your nomination. But this is, in my opinion, is a helpful process to go through to solicit interest. You know, folks who have already, who may have run in the past may no longer have an interest. So I don't know, to me, that's not always the best way to do it, although it can, you know, certainly some people do do it that way. It's just to pick the second highest vote getter. But anyway, everybody still has the right to nominate whomever they believe to be appropriate for the position.
It just puts, I guess it puts us in a little bit of an awkward position in that, what if we get applications from three people who ran for council last time and didn't make it? And we don't vote on any one of those? Well, they got to feel pretty bad.
That's, that's part of the, that's part of the business. You know, that's part of what's going to come down. But you also, we're going to, what you're trying to tell me about doing is, if we pick a town council member, we're probably going to be looking at one of the people that finished third, fourth, fifth, or sixth. Third, fourth, fifth, or sixth for that, for that position. So what's the difference, in my opinion? I mean, everybody else is going to be able, need to figure out. And we need to come up with a process that will give us, I would like to see, because first of all, if we pick one next month, if we, if we put something out there and we get a person that we select next month, this, which is April, within two and a half months, we're going to have people that's going to be registering to run for mayor. You know, they're going to, they're going to go down to the election board and put in their application to run for mayor. It might be one of the, we might get somebody that's going to run for mayor that wants to be, be, come in and be the mayor for six months. That might, that would probably help that person person's prospect to be the mayor, be elected mayor. I'm just saying, you know, if you, if you open it up to different people, you know, like I said, we're going to have to, we're going to have to do it that way. We're either going to open the process up for the mayor, or we're going to open the process up for the town council member, for who takes over as mayor. So, you know, we're going to still have to open up the application process somewhere.
Okay, my heartache with it, and I'm not going to belabor the point any longer, even though it's a very, very important thing that we need to discuss, but in the interest of time. I just don't like the idea of, hey, you want to be a mayor, send us an application. I don't, I'm not big on that, but let's go with what we've got to go with. The, like Randy, council member Jernigan and I both agree, and I think Philip does, that filling the council member seat is a snap, that's the easy part. Do, unlike the school board, let's go with the next runner-up, because that's the one that people wanted. I'm fine now, I'm done, I've made my point, and I'm not going to belabor it.
I just want to add real quick, we've talked quite at length, there's been discussion at length about the nomination process. And again, that creates a pool of nominees that the board then ultimately votes to fill the role of mayor. And the first, like I said, is the, there's a motion and a vote on a particular nominee. You know, as I explained a minute ago. The other process, one that would be, is actually the preferred process, is via ballot. All the people who are on, or nominated are eligible to be included in the vote. And then each member submits a ballot, and then you collect the ballots and you figure out who the highest vote getters are. And then you have a process that you all agree on, the rules of this process before, and you drop the lowest ballot getters until you narrow that down further. Because it's sometimes difficult, if you've got a whole, you know, slate of nominees to work through each one on a vote, and they don't get the majority, and then you keep going and so on and so forth, this ballot This ballot method helps you cull down the pool rapidly until you arrive at the, the one who has the most favor.
Yeah, whatever we decide to do, we need to move along with it, so this thing isn't dragged out for three months.
Do we have a, do we have anybody to give us something that we can all say yes or no to? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm open to what everybody, if there's anybody's got, got a, I don't know whether it would be a motion or whether it would be, this is the process I'd like to see done and then we all say yes or no.
I think what I would recommend is that you, somebody makes a motion that indicates how you want to proceed to fill it. And, and essentially stating a timeline, for example, next meeting that you list interest for, for the council to take action on this at the next meeting. You're not bound by that, you know, certainly if you don't get any, any nominees and you still wanna take more time at that point to consider it, you could do that. But I think you just need to give some indication to folks who might be interested, if you're gonna go that route, or just to the public in general, how you intend to handle this. And if it's not to fill the vacancy tonight, which I'm not saying I recommend, then you just sort of, somebody makes a motion to suggest how we, how, how the board desires to proceed.
What if we did something like, for the next meeting, we, we agree to, I, I just don't wanna put something out and have people vote on it and, well, that's been shot. What if we agree to come up with a ballot next meeting that includes all members of the council, plus all citizens, Councilman Jernigan shaking his head already, all citizens that ran for office that were defeated.
I'm just, I, I don't mean to be, I'm not sure what the right word is. But you could do that in, in one, in one breath, essentially. At the next meeting, you could say, I nominate all members of this board, as well as all folks who ran in the last election. And thereby you've created that pool of nominees. You have to figure out who, what all their names are, but that would be the slate of nominees. And, and then it would be up to the board to, to vote among those nominees.
But, but you also have got to know that those people are interested and will accept. I mean, there's, you know, I, I, I'm just gonna be upfront with you. I'm the mayor pro tem. I do not want to be the mayor and I do not want to resign my position as a town council member. I'm, I'm, I'm going to be a town council member for the next three years. Now, if I decide to run for mayor in three years, that's different. Now, if some of the other county council members want to be mayor, they can say they wanna be mayor and I will listen to them and I, I would vote. If any town council member wants to be mayor, I'm for them. I'm just telling you upfront, I am not a candidate to be the mayor.
Ms. Worley.
Who is?
Would you have opportunity to call for application people to come in, feel like application is interested in mayor position for the next six months?
You mean from the general public? I mean, we could, we could get it on the Facebook page and on the website. I think that would probably be the best way to, to get the interest out there or to solicit the interest from, from people. We can certainly do that.
My suggestion would be that we set up a, we, we, we let Leanna or somebody set up a, a little application process to get on the, on the Facebook page, to get on the other ones and tell them anybody interested in being the mayor, to, to, to apply for the mayor, have their application in by March the first, or April the first, excuse me, by April the first. So that we could, we could, those, those people who are interested, we could look at them and on our next meeting, we could, we can pick, we can nominate the ones we wanna nominate, which means we can also nominate somebody that hasn't put in an application if we want to nominate somebody that hasn't been an, that hasn't had an application. But here's my point, is if somebody who is a town council member right now, that wants to be mayor, I think that needs to be done real quick so that we can come in here and, and replace that town council member within the next month. I would, I'm firmly believing that if somebody that's on the town council that wants to be mayor, I will, I will vote for him right now. But that would give us the opportunity to say, now we got a, opening for a town council member that we can replace next week or next month, excuse me. Which we could also, as soon as we do this, we're going to have to either come up with a process. But if we go a month and then we pick a town council member, now we got another month to go to pick a new council member. So you're talking about a two-month process. I would love to see us get something where we're gonna have somebody as mayor at our next meeting. Now, that's just my opinion. Everybody else can say what they want to.
My terms are up this January and I don't plan to run again. I served eight years as mayor. And except y'all, if y'all want me to serve out this other six months and y'all select the council person, then that's fine. If you don't, that's fine too.
All right, I'll make a motion that we elect Philip Wright as a new mayor. Effective immediately. I got any discussion?
They can have. There's gonna be a bit of time.
Do we have any discussion?
We're just, just asking anybody else, ask anybody else, do they want to be the mayor?
Is there anybody else that wants to be mayor?
They want to be the mayor.
For the town council, that's where I belong right now.
That's what I said. I'm, you know, I made my, my, my questions clear. Anybody else? Okay, I asked for a vote. And of course, I don't think since Philip has been nominated, he can vote here. He can.
We're, we're good doing it this way, counselor?
Yes. All right, all in favor of Philip Wright being elected as mayor or being selected as the mayor as of March the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one? Say so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. We have a new mayor.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Yeah, I need it.
Thank you for stepping up.
You're the new mayor. You wanna take over?
We can finish this meeting.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, could I, could I say something real quick? Just, I, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank former Mayor Jim Uzle for everything that he has done for this town over the past, what, fifty or thirty-nine months, I think it is. And I think I'm safe to say on behalf of the, the members of the town council, the Wilsons Mills staff, the police department and the citizens, we wish him all the best. We wish him happiness and health in the future. Thank you.
Okay, now, before we move to something new, now we got to, got to talk about the process of picking the new town council member. Again, my suggestion, I know y'all are talking about people who finished third, fourth or fifth, but the first thing you need to do is, if those are the people that, and I'm not against it, I would vote for any one of the ones that finished third, fourth or fifth. But the first thing you need to do is see if they are interested in it. It, because some, you know, none of them might be interested in it. But again, that all comes down to a, a small application type thing where they say they're interested in it for these reasons. And we go with it from there. And everybody, you know, that's just my opinion. And I'm, I'm asking for anybody to make a motion on how we proceed that we, so that we can come up with a new town council member by our next meeting. Again, my suggestion would be to have a, a short application that for anybody interested in being on the town council, which need, which must be returned to our town office no later than March the thirty-first. I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second that.
Need more discussion? Leanna, can you get a, a, a real short application type thing made out within the, so that we can have something to us by March the thirty-first?
Yes, so you want the deadline for people who are applying for council member to be the thirty-first, which is two weeks from Wednesday. So if we got it, we got it created tomorrow and got it out there on the website and Facebook page on Wednesday.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have anything in particular that you want on that application other than their information and why they would want to serve?
Exactly. To me, that's the only thing. I know, other, other people can say what they thought, think that should be on the applica, on the, on the application. But to me, our number one thing is, we want to find somebody that wants to do what's right for the town of Wilson Mills.
And it has to be someone who lives within this.
It has to be somebody, of course, who is eligible to be.
Yeah, make sure that, yeah, that goes without saying, but that needs to be in there as well.
Anybody else got anything?
We have to vote on that yet? We got a, you got a motion in a second, but we didn't vote, did we?
We were discussing.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Who seconded that motion, I'm sorry?
Mr. McGowan. I think it's just as a point of order here and this is sort of new, novel territory. I think, given the way that the council member Wright has been voted to take the role of mayor, that he should preside over the meeting instead of the mayor pro tem. And then understanding that you now only vote in the case of a tie and that you, you vote, you know, right. I mean, I don't mean to take the job from you right here and he, he may not be prepared.
I thought it was be it April the first, come in as mayor.
I think the motion was for it to be effective immediately. I don't know if that means you have to actually move, I just.
Was anything else on the nomination for town council? And other questions on the mayor's position, nomination or whatever? If not, we'll move into our first open forum. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on any subject, and I don't have a cop, tell me what time it is. We're open that now, come forward and at seven fourteen and hold your comments for three minutes. No one coming forward, we'll close the first open forum and move into our regular business. I don't know about the sewer report. Leanna, do you have anything on the sewer report?
We do. If you read on my report about the meeting that I had with County Manager Rick Hester about some of their plans to update their comprehensive land use plan. And one of their requests during that meeting was that since the county is now not going to be doing their own sewer feasibility study, is that the town go back to our discussions about this interlocal agreement. And if you'll remember, it's, it's been several months when they first presented it to us. They were looking to update the current interlocal agreement that we have and they were talking about, well, in addition to our development areas that have to do with wastewater that we send to the county, it also included an article about the town taking over the water and sewer within a five-year period. And so Attorney Deuceblon and I met today with our planning consultant Chad Sari and our engineer Brian Leonard. And we came up with a couple of things, I'll let the attorney take over from here. But I will say that one of the things that we discussed that our next step should be is to reach out to the Triangle J cog for help to see what that would, what that would involve for us, whether it be financially or staff, equipment, permits. Exactly what would it mean for us to have to take this over within five years? And hopefully it would not be that short of a time. I'm, I'm thinking that's might, that might be what we're gonna propose. But just reaching out to the cog and seeing if we can get some kind of an estimate of what that would involve, so that you can make an informed decision about what would be put in this agreement with the county. And I'm gonna turn it over to the attorney for the rest of the discussion.
Yeah, I think she encapsulated the gist of what we really talked about. The county seems to be pushing for this interlocal agreement to be updated. And it has provisions in there and with respect to the town, the county's continued maintenance and operation of the system and the town's obligations with respect to new development and getting upsizing when appropriate, either at the town or the developer's expense. And those are provisions that were not in the old agreement. And so I think they're looking for a little bit more certainty with respect to the process with development in the town going forwards. They also, though, there's one, there's one article in there, like Leanna said, that requires the town to take over the operation of its water and wastewater systems in five years. And, you know, it would be nice if that was just a simple process, nice tidy vote and, you know, hire a couple of folks and a vehicle, but it's not, it's not that simple. And you have to bring on a whole new department, you have to bring on new software, you have to implement billing. So there's a lot involved in that. And what I'm reluctant to do is to put this agreement in front of you guys. And, and it just has a sort of a hard deadline. And you realize that, wow, we can't possibly comply with that. And I want, I want, I would like for, as Leanna suggested, for us to look at some potential sources of someone who could come in and say, you know, these, these, looking at your system, looking at your town, looking at your resources, this is what we envisioned being sort of the, the phased, we think is probably, would be better if it was a phased process to have had sort of benchmarks or, or different periods of time that the town would have to reach a certain part of this process of taking over the system, instead of just being in one fell swoop on a certain date. So not really knowing what that period of time might be. You know, if the town were to spend a lot of money and pursue this very aggressively, it could potentially be less than five years. But I think Leanna made a good point that you guys don't even have a building at this point, that you could house a public works staff. So, I mean, there's just a lot that goes into that. And, you know, if you were, you were wanting to pursue this with all due haste and spending the amount of money that would take to get it implemented very quickly, then you might have it in five years. But you might also not. And I think it's better for you to have a, a better picture of what you're committing to before we just go rush into this agreement. So what, what I was hoping is, I think we had this discussion last year and, and if you guys said, look, I don't, I don't think we're even gonna go that route. I don't think we want to take on this role of being the owner of and operator of our own water and wastewater systems. Then all I could, you know, I could just go into that agreement and delete that Article Four and just tell the county that's not on the table. Then all I could, you know, I could just go into that agreement and delete that Article Four and just tell the county that's not on the table. And then, and then I could put it in front of you, you know, with, with any suggestions I have. But, but I think that's not the route you guys want to go, because based on the discussion last year. So I don't, unless somebody tells me differently, I don't think we need to take action on it. But I think that the current, the current movement with the town staff, with Leanna and the town's consultants is get somebody to give us a quick picture of, of what it would entail that way, that, and that can inform what goes in this agreement. And, you know, if the, if the county is really wanting to push this forward, then, you know, maybe they, I, I, I don't know. But I, I think there's gonna be some measure, I think it's caught, it's money well spent. If the town does move forward with, with paying the cog or, or paying a maybe private consultant to, to give the town a better idea of what it would entail to acquire its own water and sewer system. And I think the, the town administrator and, and the consultants can go, can go down that road up until the point that we have to spend money if it's in excess of her threshold. And so unless you guys tell us differently, we'll just proceed that way. And, but if, if you feel otherwise, let me know.
I mean, I, I, maybe I'm a little bit foggy up here, but we were probably the only municipality that contracted with the county to do that for us, correct? And we still are. And what, and that agreement, I understood, actually went out a number of years beyond the five years. And what's, what's pressuring somebody to change it now?
So the, the year, the term of the prior agreement, which was in 2017, is forty years. So that seems to create this, this comfort level that, you know, it's in place for a long period of time. But it's, it's not forty years hard number, it's forty years or the date by which that the town pays off this grant.
Oh, that's right.
So, so it could be quite a bit shorter than that.
Okay.
And I don't think that that's, you know, that's not in, in the very, very near future, but it's something that is a lot less than forty years. And, and once that agreement expires, this agreement would, the new agreement that the county has proposed would, would supersede that agreement.
Very well. Thanks for reminding me of that.
Just to clarify, attorney Deucevlon too, that we clarified today on that phone call. The current agreement that you have with the county states that whenever that time is up, whether it's forty years or when the loan is repaid, the county takes it back. Their new agreement draft proposes that the town take it over. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Instead of us paying it off and giving it back to the county, we're gonna pay it off and keep it. If, if we go that route.
Well, the, the new draft agreement doesn't, doesn't discuss the timeline that has anything to do with the paying off the loan. It's just stating that, that we would, that they would turn the system over in a certain amount of time.
Okay, so instead of staying with the county, it would, it would revert back to us?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Attorney, your suggestion is that we continue to let you have discussion with the county and everything.
That's correct. It's, it's, at this point, I don't know, I haven't been talking to the county, but the town administrator has. And, and my recommendation is to let the group of us work on getting to a better place in, as far as understanding what that ownership component is going to entail, so that we can make sure that the agreement that we signed with the county doesn't put the town in a, in a bad position with respect to that part of the agreement.
I think it's obvious that that's what we need to do. You know, whether we, I don't, I don't see us being able to take it over in five years, because I don't think we're gonna have a facility ready in five years. So I, I don't know whether we need a motion or whether we just need an agreement amongst us that we let the town administrator and our volunteer try to work out a better agreement with the Johnson County.
Allow them to go ahead and continue working on it and come up with a little better deal in five years.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah, I do.
Everybody agree? Ms. Dobbins? Alright, so all four of us, plus the mayor now, agrees, so let's live with it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to our discussion of appointing Leanna for the Public Works Department.
May I speak? I make a suggestion that, I make a suggestion that Randy Jernigan be appointed the liaisons for the public works and streets. I will then do the sewer, which I think Mayor Azel was doing. And I will be glad to work with that situation. And if anybody else wants to change it, they can do whatever they want to do. But I'm willing for Mr. Jernigan to be the liaison for the maintenance in the streets. And I will then work with the, with the sewer that, that Mayor Azel was working with. And Phillip, are you, are you still going to be in charge of the events?
I'll still meet with him, yeah.
Okay, so we, we've, we've taken care of all the things that's caused by the meeting and, and the other. Is there anybody that disagrees with that?
Councilman Jernigan has been asked to be a liaison for the Public Works Department. And Mr. Trippett, Councilman Trippett is going to move into the sewer liaison part of it. Anyone have any objections? Do I have a motion to allow that or?
I think that's just at your election, mayor. That's at your election, mayor. You're good to go.
Well, normally with the mayor, or makes recommendations, and then the council votes on. But anyway.
It's up to you, Mr. Mayor.
That'd be fine with me then. Mr. Councilman Jernigan liaison with the Public Works and Councilman Trippett with the sewer. Alright, do a liaison report, have a liaison report on public work.
So soon.
That would be Councilman Jernigan.
Phone on. Thank you. I've not met Patrick yet, but he is our new supervisor over our public works. Patrick's right here. I'm glad to have you. Really don't know of anything that's been going on other than what's on his paper right here. And I did speak with Benny the other day, and he said that you made him paint the speed bumps in Lockwood all day, but I know how that goes. Anyway, they started working on taking inventory supplies, they planted the speed bumps in Lockwood, because if you're riding through there, they'll catch up on you real quick, like. Completed fire marshal's requirements after inspection by installing fire extinguishers and surge protectors, two animal control calls. Put out new rocks and scraped around town hall. Once again, the current town truck had to be repaired. Replaced temporary fencing at the park, Clean Town Hall, Community Park, and began his new task as public works. And he's working with Leanna on the things that we need to get done around town. So it's gonna be a new, new era for the town, and just like, we're growing. So bear with us.
I will just say that Patrick has jumped in and done a great job about taking hold of a lot of different things that have not been, not been worked on in some time, just because we haven't had anybody in that position. But an update on the truck that, up to the email that I sent out last week, it wound up being not as serious as we had originally thought, and the cost to repair that truck was $450. When we go into our budget session Thursday night, we will have some suggestions about replacing that and doing something different in the Public Works Department. And on the street side of it, Patrick is gonna be meeting with our town engineer this week to start looking at Papa Creek, because we have promised the public that that would be the first one we would do when we got this position filled. And he's already jumping on it, and they're, they're gonna start getting those, those requests ready to go out for bid.
Want to say thanks for picking up Fire Department Road, working on that trash thing, very important. And Wilson's Mills and all the others, very nice, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Earl Wright, Adventure Board, ask me, yeah. They had an adventure board meet, meeting last week, and discussed another moving night at the park. They're trying to get prices together on it. And some suggestions were made, different from what happened the last time, but they're still working on it. You have anything?
Thinking about buying that equipment and keeping it or leasing it out or what? What's the, what's the latest?
Haven't decided yet. We're just gonna look and see what, what it would cost as opposed to what we could maybe.
And the, and the storage of it, that thing is massive.
That's, that's the big thing right now in storage.
Okay, thank you.
Planning zone with Councilwoman Dobbins.
Okay, we, at our last meeting, we welcomed our new member, Jay Mauser, and also Wendy, let me see. Okay, the staff report is attached for February 2021. At our meeting, Wendy also gave us a fee update on Mill Creek Phase Two. And also Chad, he presented us with changes to the UDO, which we have. We're not gonna give the, the other councilmen our copyright, Wendy?
Not right now.
Okay. Well, okay, so we went over the Wilsons Mill Development, the UDO. And it was a mandatory update for all the counties, towns and cities. And the deadline for compliance to this was July one of 2021. So he did compile about ten slides that he went over with us on those, on the UDO. And that was about it. And that was about all that we went over at that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Police report, David McGowan.
Chief Williams, please step forward.
Hello, good evening. Hello, good evening. Okay. As you can see, I put in my report. Nothing extraordinary happened, other than the vehicle that we haven't added in there. First of all, any questions about the report that submitted, not including the vehicle? Alright. This past week, we had vehicle number twelve, which was our Dodge Charger 2014 model, has eighty thousand miles on it. And we had anticipated going for another twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand miles or something like that. It's got severe engine problem, submitted a report on that. And let me take a look at the attachments that we have in there. Now, the question is, what do we do about it? We've got a couple of options. One is several recommendations came in to replace the engine outright. And two recommendations came in to, it's repairable. In addition to that, we have another vehicle, vehicle eleven, which is in very, very poor condition. So going forward, what should we do about it also? If you have any specific questions about what's in the packet, I can answer them now.
Look it over. I, I looked it over in depth, and you and I had a discussion on it, chief, and that is, my, my feeling, if you all have read this also, would be to, I, I'm not game, or I'm not interested in replacing an engine again. We've gone down that road before. And it did not work out well then, and I don't know that it would work out now. My recommendation would be something much simpler, and that is, let's go ahead and, can they, can you boast me up a little bit, Sean? Thank you. My recommendation would be to repair vehicle twelve with the crankshaft, the lesser of the two bids, as long as the repair work is done by a reputable dealer and someone who's going to give us a, a, at least a ninety-day warranty on parts and labor. And then, at the same time, vehicle number eleven is just pretty much wasted. It's, it's, we have, it has, where is your, wait, hold on a second, chief, bear with me here. Vehicle number eleven has gotten to the point where it's scoring all of twenty-four on the, on the hit parade. And I think we agreed a couple of years ago when we instituted the chief's replacement policy plan, anything under thirty-five needs to go without question for a variety of reasons, and that was going to prevent us from having to go back and forth with mileage and cars and checking the oil and everything else. Once it got under thirty-five, without question, we'd replace it. So I recommend we replace vehicle number eleven immediately with a new vehicle. And that we repair vehicle number twelve crankshaft to whatever bid you determine is best, Leanna and chief.
What is, what is the rating on vehicle number twelve?
Thirty-five.
The number?
It's got.
This is our crankshaft replacement, metal shavings. Do they think there might be other damage in it, other than crankshaft?
One dealer had metal shavings in it, they're the ones that wanted the engine replaced. The other dealership, we took it to two different, we took it to two different dealerships. The second dealership did not find metal shavings. Don't know why, but they're claiming that it can be repaired, and it's not necessarily the damage that was caused that we thought, you know, from the metal shavings, that it was simply the crankshaft and the lifters, and it can be replaced or repaired.
I know metal shavings get into oil, oil veins and all, it's car, the box and more than wrong, but I, I didn't.
Sure does, and we had them rechecked it again, and they did not feel like the shavings was an issue, that there were metal shavings in it.
You just have to build up over a period of time. I mean, you just take it and say, are there any shavings in there now? And he goes, no. Well, it's fresh oil, probably. I, I don't know, I'm just saying.
Two evaluations were done within five days apart from the two dealerships.
They wanted it to be there that quick.
My, my question. My question. And I'm a firm believer, you don't put an unsafe vehicle out on the road. I've said that about the vehicle we had for our code enforcer. And I'm going to say that again. If it's at 35 and you do the crankshaft, you still have about 80,000 miles on all the other parts. And in my opinion, when you start replacing major things, they're not going to last very long. So personally, I'm against doing the crankshaft. I'm thinking about replacing it too. I mean, what are we going to do? Get 24, 20 more miles, 20,000 more miles out of it versus?
It's more than 24,000 more if you replace the crankshaft.
He's guaranteeing the crankshaft for 24,000 miles. He ain't guaranteeing the car for 24,000 miles.
If we went with that crankshaft and it failed, but we had an agreement with the dealer that if it failed within a certain, within that 90-day window, you guys advised me, do you think any dealer would be willing to take the money that we put into that crankshaft and apply it, it or part of it to a new vehicle?
It's not a crankshaft, it's camshaft business.
All right, camshaft then. I guess my intent was, when I'm talking with the chief, was replacing 11, obviously, because it is well into that 35 at a 24, but trying to keep a lid on some expenditures and just going with the camshaft, was it? I mean, if you want to go with both vehicles, that's fine, but can we afford that? Because we're going to be coming up down the line with another vehicle very shortly for the Streets Department, Maintenance and Streets. I'm just trying to keep a lid on some things here.
Chief, if you would just, as far as vehicle 11 and what its purpose is now, and then 12, if being repaired, would move into that? And, you know, because we're not talking about repairing vehicle 12 and then putting it out on the road for a full-time shift worker.
Yes, if we were able to get a new vehicle, what happens with vehicle 12, if we repaired it, it would now go into the, what we call reserve duty. It's the backup vehicle for part-timers. It's housed here at the school. It's not driven nearly as much. It's used in case of breakdowns on other vehicles. So that 80,000 miles would conceivably go, you know, a lot farther than it would if it was driven full-time. That's the idea. And aside from the camshaft right now, we haven't had much problems with it. But it is brought at that point, it starts to break down and we don't know what's coming. But according to our VCR vehicle report, 80,000 miles was when we were going to start to evaluate it anyway. And hopefully, in a perfect situation, you know, 15,000 to 20,000 miles later, we would transition it out anyway. It's just that vehicle 12 broke down a little bit sooner than we expected. And we didn't expect to be an engine problem. But it's really had no major issues other than what's going on right now. So I.
Turn your microphone off.
It's hard to tell. I know we have three other new Dodge Chargers, fairly new, and we have a new SUV. So those are on the road and those, you know, basically maintenance-free, problem-free anyway, other than just minor maintenance. So I don't anticipate a repaired 12, you know, doing a lot of mileage. But when our part-timers come in, you know, we do like for them to have something to drive. That's in good condition. And a repaired vehicle 12 would be sufficient.
You're telling me that you think 12 will be in good, will be in a pretty good condition if we replace the crankshaft?
Yeah, but again, 80,000 miles is about the point where, you know, your front end and everything, all that stuff starts to break down. We've not had any major issues with it thus far, but it's getting to that point. And I don't know what's going to happen.
Crankshaft, and then all of a sudden you would get five more things that's wrong with it. Because at 80,000 miles, you're starting to get more things that's going to be wrong with it. I'm not, after the discussion, I'm not against replacing the crankshaft and keeping the vehicle for temporary or for however you, however you pronounce it, not temporary use or replacement use or whatever. I'll be okay with that. But you are saying that we need to, at this time, consider replacing number 11?
It's got 129,000 miles on it. It does okay part-time, you know, basically it sits up most of the time. But it's not going to last.
How much of the equipment that's on 11 would be, we'd be able to salvage and put in the new vehicle?
Gosh.
Car?
Maybe some communication components, not a lot. I don't think it's a lot in there.
What would you recommend that we get to replace it? The SUV like we discussed when we got Sarge's new vehicle?
Well, the last discussion we had, everybody was pretty much through with the Dodge Chargers. And there's not another. And there's not another sedan real there that police departments are using the way they were the Charger. So SUV is probably.
We get for Sarge, was it a Ford or?
There's all our other ones out there too, that, other than just Tahos.
Ford Explorer is very popular. There are some options out there, SUVs.
I personally feel like, I know it may cost a little bit more than the Charger. Forever buying another Dodge Charger, I can tell you. I'm forced to use it, buying an SUV, whether it be the Ford or the other.
We need to start putting vehicles out there that we think can last.
Are we prepared to go ahead and approve a new vehicle and simultaneously the repair of the other vehicle and put a cap on the amount of the new vehicle and let Leanna and the chief use their discretion and get something good for us? Are we prepared to do that?
Are we prepared financially, Leanna?
Yes, sir.
That's the main thing. I can't.
I'm prepared to vote for it, so I'll make the motion that we give the, give Leanna the authority to start taking bids for a new vehicle and repair vehicle number 12.
My second.
Most have been made in second that we purchase a new vehicle for number 11 and repair number 12 in discussion, been made in second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Got anything else, chief? Okay. Finance office report, Ms. Shirley Huck. Review your statements, finance statement for February 2021. Anyone have any questions or comments that they would, they have them?
I understand our revenues are up, Ms. Sherry, 91%. 24% greater than we anticipated. What would you attribute that to, given the current state of affairs?
Sean, you said it was on. Actually, it's due to the fact of the ad valorem taxes being paid on time. And the majority of those have been paid. We still just got like a, you know, a small percentage of what it, for them to be like at 100%.
We didn't anticipate it to be like that because it says, it says 24% greater than anticipated.
24% of the revenues have been, that was collectively of everything, of all the revenues. I mean, not just the ad valorem, but the ad valorem and the vehicle tax, which whenever we were in the budget sessions last year, did not, because of the COVID. I mean, projections on revenue were really, really low.
Doomsday scenario, wasn't it?
Yes. So we went to worst-case scenario this year. However, that's not being, thank goodness, the outcome of our revenues. And everything, I mean, the vehicle taxes is on point, the ad valorem, and also the sales and use tax.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you, Sherry.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Again, thanks for putting together that synopsis for us. That is such a big help. That plus Leanna's report of activity really helps a lot. So thank you both.
Have an order to correct the budget amendment number two. While you're there.
Yes, at our last session in February, there was a budget amendment that was voted on. However, I mistakenly admitted one portion of it, so therefore that needs to be included. And it was a budget amendment number two because I had forgotten also that we had a budget, the first budget amendment in July of last year. So this budget amendment here would be number two, and it will be a corrected budget amendment number two. There was a small portion of my tables that I had forgot to insert in the original in February. So I needed to put that in there.
Nothing was hurt by it, right?
No, sir.
Okay.
I have a motion to accept budget amendment number two.
My second.
Which one I even made the motion, Dave, or and you ran? Dave McGowan, Councilman McGowan made the motion to accept the budget amendment. Councilman Jordan made second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion taken. Time administrator report.
Thank you. You have my report. And I tried to put on there, since this was the second one, there's a column on the right-hand side with asterisks that tells you whether or not something has changed from the previous month that way as you're going through it. Because I know it's a lot of information, but at least you can see things that have been updated since last month. Most of it's just kind of for your information or the status of how things are going. But I do want to talk about the maintenance building because there have been some changes on that. Last month, you voted to award the bid for the building kit that we ordered to Premier Building Systems, and that was ordered. It's been ordered and they told us that it would be, I think he said, 16 to 20 weeks before we would receive it. In looking at the rest of the work to be done and talking with Johnston County Building Inspections and the local government commission, because the entire project that we're doing, this building, this maintenance building is over $30,000. There's a general statute that requires us to have a general contractor for this project. And that's not, I mean, that's in the general statute for one thing, but there's also some requirements from the Johnston County Building Inspector. And I spoke with him. Because it's a public building, there are certain things that a general contractor has to do and turn in to the inspections office, such as a life safety plan, all of the different plans for electrical plumbing, HVAC, and an energy efficient plan. And this is something that a general contractor would normally do anyway. So instead of what was originally planned to do with this was each part of this project being built or being done, being bid out separately to different people, it will just need to go out as one bid to a general contractor. We're still trying to find out, I talked with the attorney about this today as well, but we're still trying to find out if we're going to have to have an architectural design. We're hoping not, since it's a maintenance building and we're just upfitting it with a couple of offices and a bathroom. And the rest of it will pretty much be vacant space. But if that's required to, that'll be something that would fall under the general contractor. So what I'm planning to do at this point is, the building inspector there in Johnston County actually gave me about three or four names of people who do these for municipalities, general contractors that do these type buildings and know what kind of plans and stuff that the county is going to need, and put together a bid request for everything except for the building kit, because that's what we've already ordered. So all of the work for the rest of the building to be completed under a general contractor. And I can bring those back to you in April for you to award that bid. Because we still have some time before the building kit arrives.
Can we not get a building design from the supplier of the building?
The architectural design?
Yeah.
We probably can, if that's required. We're still not sure if we're going to have to have that. But we would still have.
I'd say we're going to have a design on it.
The architectural design?
Okay.
Right.
Call it that.
Right. But what we get from the people that we ordered the kit from would not include what we had planned to have a contractor come in and outfit it with the rooms, the offices, the bathroom, kitchen area.
Or probably need that design from the supplier of the building so it can work from that.
Right. And they're sending that to us. They're going to be sending that to us as well. The people that we ordered the kit from.
Okay. Is this a good time to bring up brick facade?
I can update you on that if you'd like.
I'd like that.
Okay. So I talked with Wendy in planning and she reviewed the ordinances and reviewed them with Chad as well. And we do require some type of facade because of where it's located in our zoning. But what, and I can pass this around so you can look at it. This isn't exactly what our building's going to look like because our front door's not going to be quite this fancy. But this is what we have kind of come to an agreement on, is the brick facade, it would just be like a brick area around the bottom. And then it has to also have a defined entry door. So that would be on the side facing the road.
Does the whole front have to be brick or just this front?
No, it can just be.
Just that band around the bottom?
Around the bottom.
What's an estimate for this? I mean, this is going to be an added cost.
That's going to be part of what we put in for the general contractor to finish. So the facade, the plumbing, the electrical, the foundation, preparing the land out there, everything will be included for the general contractor to come in and just do the rest of the work, the rest of the project.
Give me a ballpark figure, not a figure, just to throw me a ballpark date. When we, would you anticipate us to be finished with this thing? And Patrick can move his stuff in.
We don't anticipate to even receive the building kit until August.
Okay. So are we talking next summer?
Oh, no, I would say before the end of the fall because.
Really?
I would hope that somebody could be right, ready and waiting to get it, to get it up and going.
So before my term is up, I'll actually be able to stand in front of one of our new buildings?
I hope so.
That would be nice. Thank you.
So that's the only main thing about my report that I just wanted to point out, unless somebody's got any other. unless somebody's got any other questions about what was on the report. And then I do have one other item that I wanted to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll address one thing if you don't mind, and that's, I forget what page, I guess it's page two. It's the litter slash trash initiative. This is just an FYI thing. First off, Patrick and Benny and, and community service guys are doing a, a great job. I think it's nice to see our town like that. Plus, I don't know if you all have noticed, but something is getting, someone's getting the message somewhere. And twice now, I've seen DOT out there with crews, contract crews, but picking up trash on 70, both Business and, and the bypass 70. The other thing is, just to show you how, how things can work out, I take my trash to the dump a couple of times a week. And on Swift Creek Road from Business 70 to the airport, I don't know if you all have noticed how filthy it is trash-wise if you go that way, but I see it twice a week. So I stopped in and I saw, I saw Phil Lanier, who's the airport manager, knowing full well that that section of the highway is an adopt-a-highway under Duke Life Flight. So I talked to him and said, first impressions are lasting impressions. And people that come into Johnston County Regional Airport, going into Novo Nordis, Griffoils and other industries, that's the first thing that they're seeing. And I said, it shouldn't be that way. And can you check with Duke Life Flight? I went by there today and it's only been three days and it's all cleaned up. There's about 14 bags of trash out there. So if you see a highway that's littered and it's horrible looking, check and see if there's an adopt-a-highway sign there. Be amazing what you can do. Just drop a dime somewhere. That's all. Thank you.
Just the item that was added to your agenda about the approval of a grant agreement. If you also look on my report under grants, should be the next to the last page. We did receive a, a grant from the downtown, excuse me, from the General Assembly. And this is being administered by the Department of Commerce. This grant is specifically for downtown revitalization. And since we don't have a defined downtown, we're also allowed to use this money for signage. And one of the things that you talked about the last two budget sessions is getting new Welcome to Wilson's Meals signs. And so that's, that's what we're planning to do. That's how I submitted the grant, because that's really all that we would qualify for on this one. And that would hopefully be to at least, at a minimum, replace the three existing ones. And they are coming in on the east, north and west sides of town. So on the south side of town, coming in on Swift Creek, we can hopefully add a fourth sign and use this grant money to do that. If we have any left over, we'd like to put a sign at the park, but we'd like to use this money first for Welcome to Wilson's Meals.
What are they gonna be made of?
What we're looking at to price are the monument signs. So they would be stone or masonry of some sort. And what I would propose, and what I'm hoping that we can find somebody to do, is to have a sign where the Welcome to Wilson's Meals portion of it could be easily and inexpensively changed once we get to the point where we would do some kind of branding or logo for the town, like we've talked about. So that, you know, that middle portion of it can be switched out with our logo once we get that in place. But I will be bringing those bids to you, even though it's grant money. We do have to send in this grant agreement, and that's one of the things that I put on your table tonight. I just received it today. So I do need a vote from council to approve the grant agreement. And it's basically saying that we agree to take the money up to $25,000 based on what the cost is for what is in the project proposal, and that's included. And what was in the project proposal are those three signs, possibly the fourth one and the one at the park, depending on how long our money lasts. But I'll update you on some of the pricing that I get back, because if it's not a whole lot more than $25,000, I'd like to see us go ahead and do it all as one project, because I think it would save us money with whoever's gonna be doing them. So I do need a vote on the.
Do you want to word it?
Just to accept the grant contract with, for the revitalization and economic development.
So moved.
Seconded. Carolyn got it, all right.
Who, who got so moved? Randy made a motion to accept the grant. Carolyn, did you second it? And any more comments? Any other discussion on it? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? I was having a motion key. Anyone else have anything else?
I don't have anything else, ma'am.
At this time, we're going to our second open forum. And I guess it's about six minutes after eight, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Anyone wishing to speak, come forward, hold your comments for three minutes. No one coming forward? We're closing open forum at 7:08. Most have been made adjourned, all in favor, say aye. Most have been adjourned.